Did really good. Good for you. All for one story. You're like, too bad it gets them tonight.
Well, I mean, it's reasonable.
Oh, he does a really good job. Want to disappoint us? It's your choice.
Are we ready? Okay. I'm gonna call the meeting to order and ask Laurlee to call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Here.
Denise Chapman.
Here.
Amy Doran.
Here.
Don Kirk.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
Alexandra Lessem.
Here.
Nancy Rumfelt.
Here.
Laurlee and Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah, Amy, will you just state that you're virtual?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I am virtual today due to child care.
Thank you.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. First item that we have is the adoption of the agenda. That's for today. All right. Anybody have any additions to that lengthy agenda? All right, I'll take, hearing none, I will take a motion to adopt the agenda, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, so first from Stu and a second from Nancy. And Laurlee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Don Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessem.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfelt.
Aye.
Thank you. Agenda's approved. All right, our meeting tonight is for the purpose of selecting a search firm to replace, to help us replace Dr. Schaefer, who we are all set about, but he's moving on. And so we have this task ahead of us for the next four months or so. Try to reach a decision on what we have. So earlier this last two weeks, I've sent out emails and letters of request for application or interest showing that they are interested in being our search firm for the process. And there were two of them that we and I worked as vice president and president. We felt that would be a good way to do it. And Stu and I looked through all of them. And Stu, do you have any comments?
At whatever point you'd like me to share some additional information about the two that we both agreed would be our finalists, just let me know when you'd like me to do that.
All right. One of the proposals was way higher than the others. And so we opted not to partake in that firm. And then the other one, it took a little bit of time to get contact with them. And finally, Tom had to help us. And so we felt they weren't perhaps as invested in the process as we needed somebody to do. So we have two companies that we are working with at this point in time. And tonight, we hope to make a decision on which one will be our search firm. One of them is called Hazard, Young, Atia and Associates. And the other one is McPherson and Jacobson Incorporated. And I sent all of the board members a full packet of information about all of them. They have that if they wanted to browse it. But I also sent them all a spreadsheet I did comparing the two company, well, I actually compared all four. And then, once we narrowed it down to two, I took the other two companies off. But I asked or searched out who the consultants would be and if they had somebody in our area, because we felt that would be kind of important to be able to give back and forth, their process. And I asked them to share what their process was that they reused. And they all had four or five different stages that they go through. And then, key thing for us was looking at the community engagement. And so they all have various ways of engaging with all kinds of stakeholders, whether it's senior citizens, or whether it's the parents, whether it's the staff, whether it's classified staff, licensed staff. So they all have a plan as far as approaching the community engagement. And then, when I asked them about the recruiting and screening and how they would handle the postings, and they all seemed to access the same areas as well. And then I asked them how they limited and narrowed down the process, because they anticipate a lot of interest, and then narrowing down to maybe 10 or 12 that we would look at. And then, from there, it would be narrowed down a little bit further. And then I've cost, I asked about the cost breakdown. And so, some of them have a set fee, but then they add the cost of the travel. Some of them add the cost for advertising. And some of them have a cost for the research. There were a lot of different pieces that we looked at. And then I asked for references. And so that's basically the process that we are using it. And there's certainly way more in these packets, but that was, those were the ones that I felt were perhaps the most important for us to consider. So I want to hear from my fellow board members on their thoughts on the process. Stu, you want to share what you have, as somebody who's gone and looked at them all?
Sure. Barb and I agreed, after reading the four proposals, that two of them were really ones that we weren't interested in. So we both then spent considerable time looking at the two that we thought we were more interested in. And so I'm going to tell you just a few salient facts about those two. Ultimately, Barb and I agreed on the one that we would rank number one, and we, the one that we would rank number two. We didn't look at the proposals together. We didn't rate them together, but we ended up with the same decision. And when we shared that information with each other, we felt that we were probably on the right track. So I will be quick in this. Barb mentioned that one of the companies is Hazard, Young and Atia. They advertise that they've had 1,600 successful searches. They do about 80 per year. They actually have a local connection. The brother of one of the principals in the company actually works and lives in Loveland. And his daughter is a graduate of Mountain View High School. That was something that impressed us about both of the top two firms, is that they both had some interest in, some involvement in, or some connection to the community. The problem that I saw with Hazard, Young and Atia was even though they've done 1,600 successful searches and 80 per year, in recent years, they've only conducted seven in Colorado. And I thought, and when Barb and I talked, she thought too, that that was perhaps not enough local involvement to really understand. Much of their work is done in the Midwest and on the East Coast. So they were, this is the company that Barb and I both ranked as number two. So let me tell you now about number one. The name of the company is McPherson and Jacobson. The Colorado Association of School Boards has used them. And I'll tell you about, a little bit about some other districts that have used them as well. I had an email exchange today with one of the officials from Casby to ask some questions about the whole search process, and I'll share that quickly, too. They have placed recently 1,000 superintendents. What impressed me about their proposal, they have very specific covered services, and they offer other services for a charge. They were the only one of the four companies that offered something that I thought to be important, which is to set up spouse and/or significant other visits to the district. It's not part of the covered expense, but they're the only ones who offered to include that. What really impressed me about them was they have three pages of Colorado searches. That indicates they have a lot of understanding, they have a lot of involvement in Colorado. And whereas with the first company, I told you that the brother of one of the principals was, or lives in Loveland, one of the primary searchers, one of the executives of that company is Dr. Randy Zila, who worked in the Thompson School District as a principal. He was also, I believe, a district administrator. And for several years, he was the superintendent in St. Vrain. So he's very familiar with our area. The other thing that I wanted to talk with you about is we, we have another option. And this is why I wanted to have a conversation with somebody from Casby. Our other option is that at this point, we wouldn't hire a superintendent, we would hire an interim superintendent. So I spoke with somebody who was familiar with searches and asked some questions of that, or about that. One of the things that he told me was normally, the interim approach is used when the resignation of the superintendent, or the quick retirement, or whatever, happens very much last minute. The other is if the applicants who are available do not meet the criteria of the district. So I discussed our situation with him via email, and here's some of the information that I got from him. We will be searching at a time that a lot of people are looking. I believe Barb, isn't the post actually made on March 14th, or March 16th, or something like that, according to the, he said he felt that was a very adequate amount of time. He said also, we live in a very desirable location. Our district is very highly regarded locally particularly. And for someone who's coming or looking from out of state, that's probably what they would find about our district. And he made one other comment. Now, remember, this is someone from the Colorado Association of School Boards. He said, you have a very stable board. And he said, that makes a big difference for people who are looking and interviewing for superintendent positions. So he said, I don't think you'll have any problem finding someone to meet your needs. We always have the interim option, of course. And one disadvantage, and this is something that I thought of, he didn't bring this up, were we to choose to go the interim route, we would have to pay to choose an interim superintendent. And then, in a few months, we would have to pay to go through the superintendent's search. So we would be paying twice, basically. And based on what the gentleman from Casby told me, I don't think that's necessary, based on the other things that I told you. So I wanted to share with those of you in the audience and my colleagues on the board what I discovered, both in my own research and also the information that I gathered today from the Casby official.
Thank you, Stu. So what I'd like to do now is, you both or all had that nice thick packet. So I'm gonna let you just kind of give us your response. If it totally is different, that's totally fine. Whether it's our first or second choice, it doesn't matter. We just need to be able to have a decision tonight, is what we have to be able to do. So I'm gonna start down here with Denise, do you have any thoughts on all of the information that you've had a chance to look at? And I know I sent it, what, Monday, yesterday? I don't know. I know you didn't have a long time.
Recently.
And I apologize.
Well, it's good that we have opportunities to thank you for resurfacing the interim option. It's always, even if we get through the search process and decide we don't have the right candidates, you know, to know that interim is a possibility. I do prefer someone who has more local expertise. In the recruiting work that I've done, which is pretty extensive, having someone who really knows your, your local issues, your environment, your community, is important to help find that right match. Because as much as these can, we're interviewing the candidates, they're interviewing us as well. So if they can, you know, make that match better than someone who's, you know, has limited visibility to our area, I think that's important.
Okay, thank you. I will tell you, when I had verbal conversations with both companies, they both agreed and said that if we don't find the exact match, that they would include the interim process for us. Okay, Alexandra?
So in reading through their proposals, I found that the one, the Hazard, Young and Atia Associates, I thought was more sort of polished and put together as a proposal.
Can you guys speak up a little bit? Amy's having a hard time hearing.
Okay, I thought the, sorry, that was very loud. The Hazard, Young and Atia Associates seemed more sort of polished and put together as a proposal. And that there, there were a couple of things in the McPherson one where they sort of were repetitive, or I like, it just wasn't as well put together as a proposal. So that is neither here nor there, but that was something I noticed. I also liked, some things I liked about the Hazard, Young and Atia one, was that they talked about having the like, online portal that all of us can access at any time, so that we all have access to all of the applicants, rather than just being able to see the ones that they have chosen for us. So that, I sort of liked that. Because I always sort of wonder, like, if they're, you know, if somebody is applying, you know, they get somebody, and then they're like, no, 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 this isn't a match. But we would have been like, oh, no, this is a perfect match. So that, I thought was sort of a good thing about them. And I think also, as far as their, I agree with the like, local thing, but I thought also that they seem to be more widespread. And I don't know that we have a particular desire for somebody from Colorado, or somebody from far away, but it just seemed like their reach might be a little bit greater than McPherson's, from what I could ascertain. So those would be the positives I would see for them. The positives I would see for McPherson were definitely the local, the local connection, that they have worked, you know, more with, with Colorado school boards and have know more about that. They are cheaper, which would be an advantage. It wasn't totally clear to me as far as the, the costs, like, if those, if the add-on costs were in addition to the base fee, or if that was included in the base fee. But both of them were, the add-on costs, I guess, were fairly, fairly comparable, as far as that went. Both of them, as you said, it sounds like do, do a good job as far as, like, setting up, you know, focus groups and discussions and gathering input from different stakeholders. Again, I would say, looking at the HYA, it seems like, from my, it seems like that's a little bit more structured with them, and requires a little bit less of the board than with McPherson. It sounds like it requires a little bit more from us. So those were kind of my thoughts.
Thank you. Nancy?
So I read through both of them, and it's true, on the Hazard one, it did come across as a little more polished. But when I was reading both of them, it seemed like I couldn't, I wasn't able to get quite as much detailed information from the Hazard that I was from the McPherson. And the Hazard, it just seems like they just haven't had that many recruitments, especially within Colorado. I really liked the McPherson and the Casby connection, and how there were so many. And what I really liked was the way they laid out all of the to-dos and tasks. And they said, here's what McPherson has to do, here's what the Board of Education, this is their responsibility. And I really liked that, because this is my first time doing it. And I thought that also was just a good way for us to gauge, like, how much time are we gonna have to invest in it? And they're also just seem to be a little bit more focused on helping us, what, what were we looking for in the superintendent? What are our priorities? And so, you know, I would say I'm probably leaning towards the McPherson, as well as, you know, they are less. But I really liked the way that they laid out the to-dos and the tasks and who's responsible. And I think, about the only thing that really piqued my interest on the other one was the portal. But I, I don't know if that's worth, you know, the extra money. And we could probably get McPherson to set up some kind of shared drive, or something where we could put all of the resumes so that we could see them. I'm, I'm sure there's a solution, but those were my takeaways.
I do know that McPherson has a survey ready to be sent out tomorrow to our community. He's just waiting, you know, as well as, I'm sure the other one also does, but they didn't point it out, whereas he did. Yeah. I'm gonna jump over to Amy, and see if Amy has anything since her chair is empty right now.
No, we will. Thanks to Barb and Stu for doing, for doing some of the, or a lot of the late work for us. Greatly appreciate that. And, you know, I, I would agree that McPherson would have a good pulse on the local candidates, local needs. It looks like they've worked with us before, and might have recruited somebody that we currently work with. So, you know, I appreciate that. Again, I appreciate the Casby connection, you know, because Casby seems to, you know, is our guide. So, and yes, also, as what Nancy mentioned, is having that to-do list, the tasks very well set out, was helpful to me. The HYA cost was a big thing to me. You know, the higher cost and the lower Colorado recruits that they, or positions that they filled, were just a little concerning to me. Again, may seem to be really big in that Midwest area, but I think that, you know, Colorado, we have some definite, you know, things that need to be considered. And I think that a, somebody, the search firm needs to have a good pulse on that. So, yeah, those are, and again, the cost for McPherson was significantly less, and the cost seemed to be laid out a little more specifically. The cost for the HYA firm seemed a little clunky, like, hard to, like, is that really it, or how much else are we going to have to pay? So again, thank you very much to Barb and Stu for putting this all together for us. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Amy. Go on.
You guys have covered pretty much everything that could be.
Your feelings, though.
Yeah. I, you know, honestly, what jumped out off the page at me, and I've been kind of going back through it and see if I'm forgetting anything, is the cost. I think that there's a thousand ways to say how you're gonna do the same thing in the end. I'm a little skeptical of that kind of thing overall. You know, and there's some basic shared steps, and given that it is driven by community input and engagement in both cases, I think that if we had a strong desire to, to ask for something from either one of them, we could probably do that. So the help, the helpful part is having the comparison just to glean ideas from both. And so I think that at the end of the day, cost is our bottom line, to be honest with you. I can't, I, I just can't swallow paying more for essentially the same services, period. And there's a lot of good reasons to choose both organizations. And you guys have covered all those.
I will tell you that Laurlee and I had a conversation with our CFO, Bob, last week when I was here. And he said, he went through the process, he told us how it would be, because it's less than $50,000, we don't have to go through all of the bids and everything in that way, because it's having to do with a professional employment, employment. But he also said, don't make your choice based on money. He said, make sure that you get the company that you want us to have. And that was what he had said in the, and so, just so you know, that that's, we don't have to go that route, but I hear you.
I appreciate hearing that, but he's not the one.
Yeah, that's right.
Who sits up here and will get the opinions of everybody if I said otherwise.